Meina Tantai Dosna, le heslotan Guam is called to order. If we can please all rise and if I can ask Senator Munia Barnes if she can lead us in the prayer.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here for the session for the month of September, October. I ask that you bless our colleagues, bless the legislature, that they continue to remember that the bills that are presented today is all for the best for the people of Guam. More importantly, Heavenly Father, as you bestow your blessings and guidance on each and every one of us, we ask that you continue to pray for those that are less fortunate than what we've been blessed with, and more importantly, that we continue to do your will as we take every single bill here on the session agenda and remember that it is for the betterment of our island. With this, we pray, Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Ginenitata, tenelehine, tenelehine, Espiritu Santo. Amen.
Thank you, Senator. For the recitation of Inifresi, please Senator Yamashita, if you can lead us. And Senator Chris Duñez lead us in the singing of the National Anthem? Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. And will Senator Rodriguez lead us in the Guam hymn, Shamoro? And Senator Chris Duñez lead us in the singing of the National Anthem? Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. And will Senator Rodriguez lead us in the Guam hymn, Shamoro? And Senator Chris Duñez lead us in the singing of the National Anthem? Thank you very much. Can the clerics please take roll call? Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Munia Barnes. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Thank you very much. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning, everyone. I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated August 12, 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 25 are all subject to correction.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that the communications and petitions be appended to a session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
And I move that the messages from Imegalah in Guam also be appended to a session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
There are reports of standing committees, and I move that they also be appended to today's session journal.
So ordered.
There are no reports of select committees, so under item 12, Madam Speaker, I move for the introduction and first reading of the following bills and resolutions. Bill number 388-32 LS through bill number 392-32 LS. Bill number 393-32 COR through bill number 403-32 LS. Resolution number 431-32 LS through resolution number 440-32 LS. Resolution number 441-32 COR through resolution numbers 462-32 COR. Certificate numbers 173-32 LS through certificate numbers 174-32 LS. Certificate number 175-32 COR through certificate numbers 193-32 COR.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
My first motion is that we excuse any senator not yet present for session this morning.
Objections so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my second motion is that any resolutions of commendation, congratulatory or commendatory or condolence in nature that's introduced for the duration of the session, that it be adopted, that all senators be co-sponsors, and that the sponsors work with the clerk and the legal counsel to prepare these certificates.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
My second, my third motion is Bill 388. Let me get the title. senators, and it's an act to add a new Article VI to Chapter 77, Division 2, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the issuance of tax credits for contributors to the renovation and restoration and expansion of the Tejon Gymnasium. And the vice speaker has indicated that a committee report's being circulated, so I move that this bill also be placed on the second reading file, but it would not be heard unless the committee report is filed online.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
And we had a public hearing yesterday on Bill 401-32, introduced by Senator Rodriguez and myself, and as we discussed in the Committee on Rules, this is an act to amend a certain section of the Public Law 32-181 relative to the protection of Guam's natural resources. So again, I move that this be placed in the second reading file and that it will not be discussed unless the committee report is uploaded online, on the website.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. We have a couple legislative concurrences from your Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs on the nomination of Dr. Gail Hendricks to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification with your recommendation to pass. I move this be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
From the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, on the appointment, on the nomination of Mr. Anthony C. Blas to serve as Director of the Budget and Management Research with the Committee's recommendation to do, confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And from the same committee, on the nomination of Kamina L. G. Durking to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization, also with their recommendation to do, confirm.
Hearing objections.
Madam Speaker, I move this be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Okay, I have no other motions at this time.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. I mean Senator Esposito, the first bill on the agenda, then under second reading.
I'll take that last name too, Madam Speaker.
Okay, Senator Rodriguez, and Bill number 42-32. Yes, so 42 is the, yes.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Speaker, and to our colleagues, to the people of Guam. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 42-32 on the third reading and be allowed to briefly discuss what this is about.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 42 is an act to authorize the Department of Public Health and Social Services Director to charge third-party payers first for services provided to individuals who qualify under any welfare program, being Medicaid at the MIP, by adding a new Article 12 to Chapter 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated. Madam Speaker, this is a legislation that, from the number that we see here, is something that was introduced earlier in the term. We did try to move it forward in a previous session, however, there were some questions that needed to be answered, so we had another markup meeting in my office to have public health officials there to discuss and to answer any questions that may have been brought forward. And so what this basically is, Madam Speaker, is that it is, it sets in statute a requirement by the feds that require Guam to have statute that allows public health to charge third-party payers first if a client or a patient of public health has a secondary insurance. And so it's just a way to ensure that, you know, the resources that we allocate for public programs are spent wisely and that we, you know, that they take every effort to ensure that any third party that may be liable for any claims, for any services, are first in line and charged prior to charging the public programs. And so I ask my colleagues to support this and allow this to move forward. This is something that we've been asked on numerous occasions by public health to please act on because they've been, you know, under the pressure as well from their federal counterparts to ensure Guam does have this type of statute in place. And so before I close, Madam Speaker, I would like to just make a technical amendment and allow the, our legal counsel to delete any references to etc., the words etc. on the bill. I believe it's, you know, we must be able to name whatever program it is we're referencing and not leave it open to anything else. And so I move that amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered. it, Senator Esposito.
Madam Speaker, I don't have any objections to the bill, and certainly I rise in support of it, but can we just give me a minute to verify if the fiscal note is attached to the committee report? So we could just set this bill aside, and then once we confirm that, then we would go back and move it to the voting file. I want the body an opportunity to see that the, I just got notice that the fiscal note may not be attached to the committee report, so I want to make sure we're going to do that.
Senator, on the, on the committee report, there's a certification of waiver fiscal note requirement.
Okay.
It has a copy, however you, it says April 15, but it doesn't have your signature, so.
Oh, okay.
So it's, so there'll be no objection then, just to keep it in place?
Or that's the case.
And then we'll verify all this.
Or that's the case, I'll sign the waiver, but just so the bodies, yeah, okay. So I'll make the correction, but just so for the record, the fiscal note requirement will be waived.
Because right now it does not show, it has the form, but doesn't have a signature.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So Senator, you're going, well, as soon as that happens, then we'll send it down. So I'll still keep it in its place. Thank you very much. Moving on to Bill number 213-32, Senator Tony Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 213 to 32COR to the third reading file. I'd like to speak on the motion, please.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 21332 is an act to authorize Imegalah in Guam to exchange government property in Baragada for privately owned property also located in Baragada to be used for the Guam flood mitigation plan. And Madam Speaker, this bill has, has been supported by the Department of Land Management, also by the current and former mayors of Baragada. And Bill, Bill 213 is really the fifth version of, or the fifth bill introduced to this body. This issue goes way back to the 22nd Guam Legislatures, to the 22nd Guam Legislature, which was Bill 196, and then again reintroduced in the 29th as Bill 43 and 46, and then again in the 30th as Bill 340. And what we want to do, Madam Speaker, is address this issue once and for all so that, you know, the landowners of this property have been denied beneficial use of their property for the past three decades now. Over 30 years, Madam Speaker, this has been going on, and I hope that we'll be able to correct this issue, and I ask that my colleagues support Bill 21332. Thank you.
On the motion? No objections then. Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The author would yield. I would just like clarification if this exchange is going to be on a value-for-value or area-for-area.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I will yield to your question. It has been on the, during the public hearing, that this property meets both value-for-value and area-for-area, as the property that's being exchanged is larger than the, the private owner, privately owned property is larger than the government-owned property. And then also on the value-for-value, I do have, and it's also attached to the committee report, is the appraisal back when this issue first came to light.
So then is the, on a value-for-value basis then, Madam Speaker, if the author would yield, is then the private property that is to be exchanged, or the government property, I mean, are we talking about swapping $100 worth of land with $100 of government land? Or, I mean, it wasn't clear. What was clarified was that 11,000 square meters of private property was going to be exchanged for government property that measures, doesn't say, it doesn't say measures how many, how much area in square meters.
The area, Madam Speaker, if I may, is 9,949.94 square meters.
Okay, so the government then is getting a larger, on an area basis, a larger piece of property. But then what is the appraised value of the two properties?
On the appraised value, Madam Speaker, the appraised value on the government property as appraised by the appraisal desk is $138,000. And this was dated back in December 1st, 89. And the property of the private owner is 193,000.
So again, the government is on the, is certainly coming out ahead on this particular land exchange. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion? No, no, there's no objections then to send Bill 213 to the third reading file? Bill number 281, Senator Duñez, you're recognized. The committee report's not in yet.
Yes, it is. Although, it says pending my note, according to the clerk's office, is that pending, and the bill will stay in its place until such time that we received it.
And I understand, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in October of 2013, this bill was, this bill was on legislative agenda, Bill 136-32COR. And when we were deliberating on the floor.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just give me a minute also to verify if the committee report spins.
Because what I have from the clerk is that it is right now highlighted, meaning that it has not then been posted, and I would, it will still remain on the agenda, and I am skipping some bills, your bill and my bill as well, until then it is posted, and that's why I'm moving, I'm just moving forward. So Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sejuus Mahasit, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it is my desire to place Bill 281 in the third reading file, and I wish to discuss it on the floor.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, once again, thank you for the opportunity to present my position and hopefully gain the appreciation and support from the body for Bill 281. First of all, I want to recognize the governor and his chief policy advisor, Arthur Clark, for actually making this proposal and introducing this bill after the governor's most recent State of the Territory address. I would like to also recognize, Madam Speaker, the resolution from the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors in full support of this bill. Madam Speaker, Bill 28132 is a bill that authorizes the government of Guam to pursue compensation on a contingency basis from the federal government for their contribution to the Ordat dump. The federal mandate is set to cost the people of Guam over $360 million. Some brief history with regard to this Ordat dump issue and why this bill is being proposed, Madam Speaker. The Ordat dump was billed owned and operated by the military for the disposal of military waste prior to World War II up until 1950. Madam Speaker, after this, it remained under the federal government as an appointed federal administration until the year 1970, when the government of Guam realized elected leadership and there was a transfer of power to the local government. The Ordat dump then has been owned and operated under the jurisdiction of the federal government for about half of its lifespan, Madam Speaker. Under federal law, there is a requirement that responsible parties contribute to the environmental cleanup in cases like Ordat dump. These responsible parties include federal entities, Madam Speaker. There are US states and jurisdictions who have successfully recovered costs before, so this is not, I repeat, this is not a pie-in-the-sky idea, Madam Speaker. The US EPA has stated that the US Navy, and this is the US EPA statement for the record, Madam Speaker, the US Navy is a potential responsible party with respect to the environmental contamination of the dump. And the Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act, known as CIRCLA or the Superfund to some, Madam Speaker, requires that responsible parties pay their fair share when it comes to environmental cleanup that they have been a party to. I want to make three things very clear as I close and debate opens on this bill, Madam Speaker. This bill does not negate a commitment to a strong military presence on Guam and my full support for the ongoing and impending military alignment to Guam. This is not an anti-federal bill, Madam Speaker, but a vehicle through the courts to recover a portion of the $360 million and counting, Madam Speaker. There was a recent report that in 10 short years, there will be a need and a requirement for tens of millions more dollars to be paid by our government, Madam Speaker, to open additional cell, and they're going forward in the Ledzon Current Landfill Site. This 360 million, Madam Speaker, is simply representative of the debt service that the government of Guam has put out in order to comply with the current federal court order, which is appropriate for our government to share as well. We both have a responsibility here, but it's clear by the record and the current federal jurisdiction, as well as the US EPA concurring on this violation, that this is a righteous pursuit by the people of Guam. If passed, Madam Speaker, this will be done on a contingency fee basis, meaning the professional service fees will only be paid out to professionals if we are successful, if we are successful in our endeavors, Madam Speaker. This $350,000 appropriation, in my humble opinion, is a very, very small price to pay by the people of Guam in the anticipation of securing the potential of over 100, maybe 200 million dollars in order to be able to share the cost for the closure of Ordat dump and the moving forward in our operations in Ledzon. Madam Speaker, one of the reasons why I was attracted to introduce a bill such as this is we all know, we don't have to go far to go to a party, a fiesta, or another function to be pulled over by our mayors and asked for help when residents tell us that piles and piles of trash are filling up in the boonies. Now that's not a direct correlation to a responsibility of closing Ordat dump, but Madam Speaker, the rising cost of the rollout carts and the management of the system now, there are many of us on Guam who are doing okay, but there are many of us who also do not even have the $30, that's supposed to be $50, that will probably be $70 soon as the costs continue to mount for waste management. Madam Speaker, this is an opportunity, and I would dare say that even And I would dare say that even if we are, when we are successful in this endeavor, to sequester those, a certain portion of those funds to ensure the affordability of waste management on our island going forward, Madam Speaker, so that we can be like other counterparts in other jurisdictions and U.S. jurisdictions where it's maybe fifteen, twenty, thirty dollars a month as it is now, to be affordable so that where people don't, that I have a greater opportunity to manage their waste and to ensure that it can be picked up in a proper manner. Never will I put out an excuse, Madam Speaker, for anyone who does not have the decency to keep the ride and clean. But it is also best and a great opportunity for us to make it easy for everyone and affordable for everyone to dispose of their waste on Guam. So Madam Speaker, that was just a, an additional plea for ensuring that whatever efforts we can make, and I know that's one of the reasons why the board, who, who, the Guasa board, Madam Speaker, who currently struggles with the issues of, of, of their fiduciary responsibility on waste management, that they endorse this because they see this as a, as a viable solution to recovering funds for all of the expenditures that we have incurred, and also to sustain our system going forward. Quest Sejuus Mahasitalu, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to present this information on two eighty-one, and I hope to secure the support of my colleagues. Sejuus Mahasit.
You're welcome. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker, you recognize, and then Senator Siniklis.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I this committee report was released by the committee, admittedly. There was effort by the good Senator from Sinahanya to ask that the committee report be released. The reason why it was being held up initially was there were two concerns that we had in committee, and I want to bring that forth to the, to the body. If you'll note at the end of, I think it's section two. I apologize. It's the end of section three. As far as the appropriation is concerned, I realize that we have always in the past have said where we were going to get the money from, and if we were going to, in a pay-as-you-go, it should say that something's deappropriated and, and another part is appropriated. In this one, on line twenty-two, it says the Department of Administration is directed to identify the funds for this source. The committee could not find a place to fund this sort, be the source of these funds. We reported the bill out as it was submitted to us, but we weren't going to take the responsibility of finding the source, and we really don't believe the Department of Administration has, has, can or should be given the responsibility to, to, to provide that. And that was the deficiency, one of the major deficiencies in this bill, is that there is no place where this money is coming from. It's just, we're just giving the, the Department of Administration, the governor, the blank check to say, we'll take it from the hospital, we'll take it from DOE, we'll take it from wherever we want to, but we're going to fund this effort because we want to fund it. And so, though I, I voted to report this out, I'm, I'm more inclined at this point to vote no on this, on this bill. And the other problem that we had and we did not resolve in the committee was the, the dispute between the, the policy advisor for the governor and the Attorney General's office. There was a request by the, by the, by Adalup that the Attorney General not be included in this suit because initially it had issued an opinion that said that there were, that the CIRCLA claim had no basis. And they figured it was sort of disingenuous to include the Attorney General, who said that he didn't believe in it, in it, so I'm just pointing these out as problems. We, we, we reported it, but we did not resolve it. I don't know how it's going to be resolved, how the appropriation part is going to be resolved before we vote on it, and how we deal with the Attorney General's office and the organic tax powers that are vested in, in that elected Attorney General. Those are two major problems that this bill has, but there was an insistence that it come to the floor, and I'm just pointing out where the major deficiencies are. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Siniklis, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I echo some of the concerns mentioned by the Vice Speaker. You know, when we appropriate money from the general fund, we cannot just say, you know, we're appropriating this money from the general fund, and it's going to come from somewhere, and eventually we'll figure that out. We passed what was supposedly a balanced budget for the fiscal year. So if we're going to be adding three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in legal expenses on top of that, where is it going to come from? That, that funding source needs to be identified prior to the authorization to expend, because otherwise, this really is an unfunded mandate. But I have a, a, a concern that wasn't expressed by the retiring speaker, and that is with how this, this entire effort is constructed, I'm, I'm very, I'm very concerned. First, we're going to be appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the governor's office to hire somebody or a bunch of people to go out and pursue these claims against the federal government. After we've paid them for doing that, we're also going to be giving them a thirty percent retainer fee or a contingency fee based on whatever is awarded, so it was mentioned that is a hundred to two hundred million. So first, we're going to pay these people to do the work. We're going to pay them three hundred and fifty grand, and then we're going to let them keep thirty to sixty million dollars of the award after we've already paid them to do, to do the work. I'm kind of concerned about that. I mean, it's like we're paying the same professionals twice. Usually attorneys will take a, a case on a contingency basis, and they win a percentage of the award. Or you hire the attorney, and you pay them for the services rendered, and you get the entire award. For us to be appropriating money to hire these professionals, and then basically paying them to do all the work, and then letting them collect a contingency fee after the suit is won, I think is, is a a little, going a little too far in terms of, of paying whoever it is that's going to be taking this case. I would love to take this case. I mean, it's like a risk-free case. You know, I'm going to get paid to do all the work, and if we, we, we win anything, I'm going to get this huge bonus at the end. I really think that we should, we should pursue either or. We should authorize the, that the government can pursue this case and commit up to a certain percentage of the contingency award, and then let the attorneys come forward and see who wants to take the case. But for us to say we're going to go out and spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars without identifying the funding source for that, and then allow whoever we paid already to collect a contingency, a contingency fee at the end, is kind of a, I mean, if, as lucrative as this may sound, it, it sounds like it's a little overboard here. I mean, we have to remember that this contingency fee of thirty percent is thirty percent of the people's money that would have come back to them. So if they would have recovered a hundred million, that's thirty million. I mean, thirty million dollars can build a school. If it's sixty million, two schools. You know, so I'm not quite sure why this is being structured this way. Another concern I had with respect to this structuring, Madam Speaker, is we've, we've had to go to, through the court system in this body on two occasions. One for the tax refund resolution that the late Speaker Ben had to pursue through the Supreme Court, and another through the referendum issue that we're still trying to resolve with respect to voting on medicinal marijuana. And in both instances, I do not recall this body appropriating money from the general fund for us to pursue an issue in the courts. Those, those came out of our existing budgets. And so if we're going to be spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, shouldn't the governor's office expend that out of their existing budget? I do know that they have legal counsel up there. Shouldn't those expenses be borne by the office of the governor and the legal councils that they have already working for them? So I'm, I'm, I, I have, I have, I have a problem with this, Madam Speaker. It just doesn't feel right to me. It doesn't feel right that we're going to be appropriating money for legal counsel, and there should already be a legal counsel up at the office of the governor. It doesn't feel right that we're going to be appropriating money, and it's going to be spent to hire people who are then going to be able to collect a contingency fee at the end as well. I mean, we're paying them twice. And it doesn't feel right that we're going to be appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund when we've already just passed the budget that supposedly accounted for every single dollar that we're supposed to have in the general fund. So I, I, I don't think I can support this bill as it stands until all those issues are resolved. Perhaps I can pose them as a question to the, to the author of why, I guess the first question would be, why are we structuring this compensation package this way? Appropriating money to hire, and then also allowing for them to retain contingency, contingency fees?
I'd be happy to yield, Madam Speaker.
Senator, yes.
You know, I appreciate the comments of both retiring speakers. On this particular issue, I was preparing for a closing, but I'm glad I can have the opportunity to address it at this point. Not sure if my good colleague has ever had the experience of hiring legal counsel personally, or even in a professional setting. But I have to say, Madam Speaker, that in the field of law, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a suit of this magnitude is extremely, extremely favorable and low, actually. First and foremost, Madam Speaker, and I'm glad the two retiring speakers did not speak against the spirit and intent of the bill. Madam Speaker, the issue that's first at hand in this bill is to give the governor and the administration the authorization to go out and to pursue this legal claim. The second is to appropriate this very reasonable three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do as the committee report and the testimony that was presented during the public hearing stated, the administrative portion. Madam Speaker, I will provide the current individual, or the current senator speaking and questioning on the floor, you know, and I'm yielding, the information of a white paper that was circulated to several senators on this floor that was prepared by two major law firms stateside, which clearly endorses and states that Guam has a high, very high probability of receiving recovery of these funds. Now, once again, Madam Speaker, with regard to the legal process and the hiring of legal counsel, this structure under no other than this three hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation, which a lawsuit of this magnitude could go into the millions of dollars with the type of firms that will respond to an RFP, Madam Speaker, to be issued and awarded only under those circumstances, that a firm would assume all the responsibility and all the liability of millions of dollars have taken a suit like this as high to the federal government, Madam Speaker. It is typical and normal recovery at the rate expressed in this legislation. Madam Speaker, of course, I agree, thirty million, sixty million would build one school, would build two schools. But Madam Speaker, thirty million dollars recovery for an attorney, which on the, the mathematics utilized would be a hundred and in excess of a hundred million dollars for the government of Guam, which could still build one school, two schools, three schools, could subsidize the balance of our, of our, of our waste stream going forward to make it ten dollars, fifteen dollars for the people of Guam to be able to afford the, the rollout carts, Madam Speaker. And it's clearly stated in section three here. General fund to pay for costs and expenses, not attorney fees, incurred in the pursuit of this lawsuit, Madam Speaker. So I'm, I'm, I'm very glad to have been able to yield to the questions along these lines. And, and once again, I believe we can even get further information from attorneys who would take this case going forward. And in closing on this, Madam Speaker, it was even said by the Attorney General themselves when they came in, and I, I have other comments for the other retiring speaker, that they don't have the capacity. The capacity for this, Madam Speaker, probably doesn't even exist on the island of Guam. And so it would be RFP'd and have to be responded to. The Attorney General's office stated clearly, they do not have the expertise. As a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, the Attorney General's office changed their earlier statement that there was, that there was no position under CIRCLA. Their committee report will reflect that the Attorney General's office came and said they are in support of this and believe that there is a CIRCLA claim here. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Siniklis, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and, and I appreciate the answer from the retiring speaker, and that, and it further underscores my point. First of all, if there's a white paper being circulated that we have a high probability of winning this case, then clearly we should be able to get an attorney to take the case on a retainer basis only. We've had cases taken on, for large magnitude issues on retainer basis only for things like the tax refund lawsuit that had to be pursued, the COLA lawsuits that had to be pursued. We didn't appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for somebody to go out and do all the research and do all the legwork in order for those lawsuits to move forward, Madam Speaker. So that's why I have a, a real concern here. And as it was mentioned in the, in the response from the retiring speaker, that that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not for attorney fees, which means we're going to go out and we're going to hire all of the professional workers who are going to do all the legwork and build up the entire case. We're going to spend the people's money to build up the entire case, and then we're going to hand that entire case over to an attorney who's only going to pay, who's only going to charge us the retainer fee of thirty percent, but he's going to have all the work already done for him, and he's going to go out and pursue the case and take thirty percent of the people's money, which will come out to thirty million or sixty million, depending on if we win a hundred million dollars or two hundred million dollars. That does not feel right, Madam Speaker. If an attorney is going to take the case on a contingency basis, and I have worked with attorneys before, they're going to build into that contingency fee the cost of doing all that research and all that legwork. So if this really is something worth pursuing, and I think it is, we should not have to, if the white paper is correct, which I have not seen, we should not have to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the people's money to do all the legwork and build up all the, build up the case and gather all the evidence just to hand it over to an attorney, whomever that attorney is going to be, to collect their thirty percent contingency fee on the backs of all the work that was done with the tax dollars of the people of Guam. Let's either hire an attorney at three hundred and fifty grand, or let's just hire an attorney at a twenty percent. I don't, I think thirty percent, by the way, Madam Speaker, is very high. If it really is two hundred million, let's go for ten percent or twenty percent of a contingency fee, but to authorize up to thirty percent, I think that is very high as well. So I, I really, this whole structure I have a problem with in terms of moving it forward in this manner. I don't think we should be appropriating money if an attorney is going to be collecting a contingency fee, and I don't think that a contingency fee of thirty percent for potential judgment award of one hundred to two hundred million dollars is, is prudent. Madam Speaker, at this time with respect to my comments, I'd like to make a motion to refer this bill back to committee so that we can further vet this issue and, and come to a point where we can move this, this item forward with a, with a degree of certainty and comfort.
There's a motion then to send Bill two eighty-one back to the committee, and there is an objection.
Call of the House, Madam Speaker?
I'm sorry?
Call of the House.
Sen, Sergeant Arms, can you please call the senators in?
Roll call, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, request for a roll call vote.
There's a requirement of three calls, four roll calls. Senator Tonya, a second. Take a break. The chair is back in session. We are trying to reach the other members, so therefore we're going to recess until Amy Natajantaydasna Lejas, the John Gohan's called to order. There was a motion by Senator Sniklis on Bill Number 281 to send back to the committee. There is also three requests for a roll call vote, and we have all members present. So I'm going to ask then, at this time, because there was an objection by... No, not this. So on this motion then, there is an objection, so now we would call for a roll call vote. With the clerk, then, please take roll call.
What's the question?
The question was to send Bill 281 back to the committee.
Oh, favor or vote?
So it would mean that the person who made the motion then would need to garner eight votes.
Senator Tom Adah?
Yes.
Senator Tom Adah, aye. Senator Tony Adah?
No.
Senator Tony Adah, nay. Senator Uggan?
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius?
No.
Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Limteako?
Aye.
Senator Limteako, nay. Senator McCready?
No.
Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison?
Nay.
Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes?
Nay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho?
Nay.
Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez?
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sniklis?
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat?
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita?
No.
Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Uggan?
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Uggan?
On the motion to refer Bill Number 42-32 back to the committee, the votes are ayes, six nays. The motion carries.
On that?
Yes, eight six. On Bill Number...
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Madam Speaker, I move that notwithstanding the House rules, that we reorder the second reading file, that we bring up Bill 401-32. It's an act to amend Chapters 5, 3 of Public Law 32181 relative to the protection of Guam's natural resources. It's introduced by Senator Rodriguez and myself, and as we continue to discuss that there were some employees holding this position. This matter was addressed in the current Budget Act, but the title needed to be amended. And so Senator Rodriguez introduced the bill. It was publicly heard, and now we ask that we discuss this now so that hopefully we can vote on this bill before recessing to come back this afternoon so that the individuals holding these positions, we will not have any interruption in their service. So I move that this be placed on the top of the voting file, second reading file.
On the motion to reorder, no objection, so order. So Bill Number 401, recognize the primary author, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, move to place Bill 401-32 in the third reading and be allowed to briefly discuss it.
You may proceed.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I move forward, I'd like to move to place Senator Yamashita and Senator Brent McCready as co-sponsors of Bill 401.
On that motion, no objection, so order.
Thank you. Bill 401, Madam Speaker, what it does is just really clarify what needs to be done and what we did in the budget law. If you recall, during the budget session, we were most, or all of us here in this body was looking at ways to ensuring that the three conservation recruits who were employed by the Department of Agriculture under a federal grant will remain in their positions after today, the end of the fiscal year. These were federally funded positions with intent, really, for GovGuam to pick up these positions moving forward and to eventually get them into conservation officer one positions. And so what we needed to do is make an amendment to the current law that reference these individuals as Officer One and reference them what they are, which is recruits. And so this amendment simply ensures that that is done so that these individuals can continue their service to our government and that the services they provide to our people in protecting Guam's natural resources are not interrupted. And so I ask, Madam Speaker, that our colleagues please support this measure and also further request, Madam Speaker, as the good Chair on Agriculture and our Rules Chairman, that we vote on this measure without engrossment and that it also be transmitted to the governor today so that these people can, you know, be insured, and our island can be insured that the services will continue. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Also, just to, I just want to, just to state for the record too, want to thank the chairman for being able to hear this right away. We heard it last Monday. The notice to have a hearing was sent out minutes after introduction, and so this just shows the importance of this matter and that the whole body really stands behind it. Thank you.
On the motion, Senator McCready?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank Senator Rodriguez for including myself and Senator Yamashita in this bill. We addressed this, as one of the retiring speakers said earlier, in the budget, and now we have to change the title, but so I thank them for facilitating this. I also hope that this is a sign of the times that we're going to start focusing more of our resources and attention to these conservation officers, because I think it's very important that we acknowledge that right now they're not right-sized, and through attrition and other means, they're getting smaller. And when they get smaller in size with employees, then our natural resources are in jeopardy, and enforcing some of the laws that protect our natural resources are in jeopardy. So I think this is a good start, but I don't think it should be the end, that this legislature identify these conservation officers and find a way to make sure that they get the proper resources to do their jobs correctly, more efficiently, and effectively. Because if you talk to some of these conservation officers who've been working there for 25, 30 years, they have problems doing their job effectively and efficiently because of the lack of resources that they receive. So I think we must continue to fund these positions that are expiring at the end of fiscal year, when they're budgeted through a federal resources, and we need to add some more conservation officers, and we need to right-size and prioritize them. So I thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and once again to Senator Respecho and Rodriguez for allowing us to be on this bill.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
I promise I'll be real short. Madam Speaker, I stand in rise in support of 401-32 CRR, and I'd like to thank the sponsor, Senator Rodriguez and Senator Respecho, for following through on a measure that should have been included in the budget, but more importantly, as the Department of Agriculture's Director, Mariquita Tadegui, had noted, the department has more than invested a lot of time and resources to train these officers, and if we had to do it all over again, it would take a long time to re-initiate this process.